Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Good afternoon, thank you very much. It is afternoon. Welcome to the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners Workshop. Today is Monday, April 21st, 2025. It is 1:07 PM. Apologies for the slight delay while we worked on some technical glitches. We'll go ahead and call today's workshop to order. If everybody could stand for the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll take a moment of silence for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate everybody being here today. We do have an evening meeting at 5:00 PM, so we're gonna try and wrap this up in like two and a half hours if we could all try to be out of here by 3:30 or so. It will give us a little bit of time to regroup before we go to the five o'clock meeting. We have one item, number four, which was removed. So with that, we will move on to item five, which is a discussion on the county attorney position. Ms. Petito, did you want to start us off, or?
Sure. As you know, the county attorney, Al Hadid, had submitted his intent to retire. So we wanted to go over kind of a path moving forward. So I'll introduce our HR director, Charlie Pacano, will go over what that looks like.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hi, guys, I'm Charlie Pacano, the HR director. Sorry, I'm a little loud. Should have a presentation in a folder. Okay, so like Heidi mentioned, on March 5th, Al resigned with an effective date of August 1st. So following this, us in HR, we sent over some job descriptions to Al to review because he currently doesn't really have a job description. He's been here for a while and, you know, we had a contract. But we wanted to make a formal job description for this posting. So we sent out some job descriptions from various counties. He reviewed them and, obviously doing the job, he gave us a recommendation on the essential functions of the job and, you know, what he felt like it would accurately represented, you know, what he's doing for the county. So with that, we created a job description, and that's what we've been doing since he's resigned. And the point of this meeting is really to discuss, hey, what are the next steps moving forward? How do we want the hiring process to look? And I can kind of show you what my thoughts are on it and to get your feedback on, you know, how you guys want to move forward. So the first step is the job description. Do you guys have any questions on any of the categories? Anything you wanted to add? Anything you thought should change?
Is there a better word than sedentary? That just banged in my face when I was reading this.
Where will this be posted?
I have that in here. I'll talk about the different sites.
Chairman?
Yes.
I have a comment on page three of three under education, experience, and training. This may be just a pet peeve with me, but 10 years of experience in the practice of law with experience in federal, state, I think it should say, or local government or agency or within the private practice of law with emphasis on local government, real estate, et cetera, et cetera. I think 10 years of experience in this day and age, I don't know how many lawyers they're pumping out of law schools, but I hate to miss an opportunity for a very talented prospect based on the fact that they don't meet the 10 years. I've talked to people that, oh, I don't meet the 10-year, well, five-year experience requirement, I don't meet this, and they're, they're, they won't apply. So I hate to give it a number. I would like to see all potential, high-energy, thinking out of the box, someone that can come in and make some good recommendations, and it might not be because they have been in the business for 10 years. I don't know where it came from. I don't know if that was a number you came up with or the other municipalities came up with, but I would like to see it dropped, if not eliminated.
That's one point of discussion. Go ahead.
I'd like to speak on that point. I understand her reasoning for Commissioner Carney's reasoning. 10 years is a long time, I agree. And, but you still need to have expertise in the field. I don't want a divorce lawyer necessarily directing. I know. But I would say maybe 10 years is a bit staunch because there might be somebody who's more innovative and more recently prepared for that direction. So maybe five years. I don't know whether that would be a compromise or not, but 10 years just does seem, because somebody gets out of law school, how old are they? 30?
Yeah, probably 28.
30, right? Let's say 30. And then another 10 years is 40, which is fine. But, you know, we're looking at a long-term situation, too. But maybe there's somebody who's 45 who went from one kind of law to another law but hasn't done it for five years. So you could get somebody who's much more trained in legal in, or contracts rather than just, you know. So I don't know. Just a thought.
Anybody else on this side?
On this topic? I was gonna say, it could just add to the language is preferred. That way.
Yeah, I think it's a good mark. I think 10 years is a good kind of mark out there. But Leanne's got a good point. Maybe put a little word that gives us some flexibility on that would be good.
I'm more worried about the applicant having the flexibility. So if they see it strictly in the requirements that it's 10 years, that's my worry. And no, I'm not looking for somebody that wants to retire in Flagler Beach. I want, we want somebody that's, that's gonna be committed to this long-term.
If somebody came in with an application and it was eight or nine years, would you kick it out?
Yeah, I mean, if we had a set, like, like, you know, deadline or set standard of 10 years, yeah, that would be the minimum quals. So yeah, if someone came in with eight years, then we would.
I would say.
If we leave it as preferred, then, you know, would, um, yeah, I mean, we can, you would, you would open up to almost everyone. I would say probably, I'd recommend probably five years. I mean, I think at least five years at a law school will give you enough time to gain enough experience, you know, practicing in county law. I mean, that's just my opinion. But it would make it harder to narrow applicants down. You would have a massive applicant pool to look through, which is fine, too, if you want to do that. But, uh, you know.
Personally, I think, you know, this is the chief head attorney for a, a growing county. I think a, what you'll find is people probably with less than 10 years are not going to meet the experience requirements in different areas. I think 10 years is pretty, pretty close. And I would, I would say that the preference or the suggestion from Ms. Pennington would qualify so that anybody who feels that they're qualified and may not meet the 10 years can still apply.
Okay.
And we have, I think I had Mr. Hanson. Were you nodding that way?
Is preferred?
Is preferred.
Just in case.
I can go with preferred. I like the 10 years, though.
Okay, so three of us got to have that, at least. We'll, we'll compromise with the preferred.
Too. I don't think we have a problem with it.
I'm fine as long as we're not deterring people from applying.
Right, we want to get the most amount of applicants.
If we put his preferred, hopefully, you know, then we get someone that's got eight or whatever, they're still in the bucket that goes forward.
All right, very good. Good question. Yes, sir. Mr. Salinas?
I just want to caution the commissioners in terms of just putting prefer, you can actually get anybody with one year out of law school to apply. It should have a minimum because this is a complex operation, and we want somebody that has experience in diverse areas of the county. At least having a minimum of five years would cut out some of the folks that really don't have that experience that you're looking for to guide you in your legal decisions. Just having prefer kind of opens up for everybody to apply.
Minimum five, 10 preference?
It can be, it can be written as minimum of five years. However, 10 years of experience plus is preferred.
That's more than fair.
Okay, that makes it more.
Yeah.
I agree.
So that you have a bucket, you know you can cut it five.
Yeah, I think anyone with less than five years might be, I don't know how much you'll, you'll consider him, kind of like Hori is saying. And ideally, you'd probably want an expert in, in the law to be giving you guys guidance on some of these matters. So I think at least five years of practicing would, would be suitable. Especially, I'll show you the pay range, too.
Chances, yeah.
I think it'd be more, more fitting. So you want to do, yeah, a minimum of five years, 10 years preferred? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the job description, concerns?
I don't think so. Sounds good.
Perfect. If you can hit the next slide. The clicker wasn't working earlier. It's good now. So for the hiring process, made a chart just to kind of review a timeline to give you guys an idea of what we're looking at for posting, where we're posting, like Ms. Pennington asked earlier. To start, so right now, obviously, 4/21, we're having the workshop to discuss the job description, review the process, and then for you guys to provide guidance. Mainly, that'll be on salary. The next step would be on 4/23 to start posting on some of these websites. So you have the Florida Bar Career Center, Florida Association of Counties, Government Jobs, Indeed, LinkedIn, and then some other ones. I've already talked to Al about a couple of other sites. There's some forums that we can post on, too, that are, you know, all basically county attorneys across the, you know, across the state. So that'll be the next step moving forward, would be to post these everywhere. We're looking at a 30-day posting. Just want to make sure that was okay with you guys. That was my initial thought with 30 days.
I have a question. On the Florida Bar Career Center, is that geared up towards new lawyers versus experienced lawyers?
I think everyone has access to it.
Maybe Sean can give me some more.
That would be for all attorneys, experienced or fresh out of law school. Correct.
It'd be abroad. So 30 days. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
So the next steps would be HR would review all qualified applicants, meaning my department would look through and take anyone out who hasn't met the minimum qualifications. And then we would provide you guys a list of the qualified applicants to review. We have software called NeoGov that all the applicants will be in. As they're in there, you'll have access to it, and you can kind of go through and review each of the qualified candidates. And the idea with that is we'd have to rank a top five applicants that you guys want to interview. So you would have access. You each would come up with your top five, and then we would publicly rank the top five in a meeting of who you guys want to interview. After that, we would provide some guidance on the interviews as far as like the process of how you want to do them. We can do first one-on-one interviews and then a panel interview after that. So meaning like each of you would meet one-on-one with the, with the five people, and then we would do a panel interview in a board meeting. You know, we can do either one or both. I'd probably do both. And then the guidance part of it, too, would is also what we would talk about. Do we want to pay people to come apply? You know, what kind of limit do we want to set for, you know, them traveling to come here and, you know, go through the application process for the five people you pick? So those are things that we can talk about at a later meeting, but that would be how it looks, how it would be laid out. And then obviously inviting applicants for interviews. We would take care of that in my department and then move on to the actual interviews. So any questions on that? Any questions on? I mean, like I said, we could talk about this later. Once we have the applicant pool, we can really decide in that meeting on 6/2 how we want to do the interviews, if you want to do the one-on-one or not, or how we want to, you know, I can give you a bunch more questions related to the job posting. So for now, it's just an idea.
I think we need to flush out as much as we can so we know the process, and I think the applicants know the process. There are some requirements for sunshine. I'll defer to Sean on what we are required to do publicly in, in our meeting. So do, do we have to discuss publicly when we, when we shrink the candidate pool down to the top five?
Yes.
Okay.
Whether it's you or the staff, that would have to be in the sunshine.
Okay. So those are things like at the certain meetings, when we do that, we'll have that discussion about how we got to our top five. We can do the research beforehand, but at the meeting, we'll have to debate the top five.
Yeah, that would be, well, the 6/2.
Yeah.
Or sorry, six, yeah, 6/2. This is the idea for a timeline of when you would do that. You'd all exactly come forward and debate your top five and who you want to settle on for the final top five.
And I've been through a few of these where we have paid to make sure that the top applicants, so that's a point that we all need to discuss, if we need to set a budget for bringing, you know, if they're out of state or even if they are traveling so that we have overnight accommodations for them here in town. But we probably should look at a, a budget amount and set that as well. If everybody's in agreement with that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And, um, can I go back to the requirements for one second? Because there was something that I missed. And that was in regards to having candidates with specific Florida experience. I know different states handle things much differently. And Florida is its own, I don't know what the, the right word is, but. So either, either having their, their license, their Florida license or some language that it's, like, we can debate this if it's acquired within a certain period of time. But I know hitting the ground running in Florida law is probably going to be pretty, pretty important. So I wanted to raise that as well amongst the commission.
Do we have member of Florida bar on here?
It's on there.
Yeah, on the, yeah, the last thing is a member of the Florida bar.
They already have to be a member of the Florida bar.
All right. I just, for some reason, I didn't catch that when I was skim, skimming through. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
No worries.
I ask a question on the actual phase four. It says instruct staff to negotiate contract. Does the board not see or give our opinion on the contract?
No, I think that would be, I, I think that means instruct staff, and Hori's been through a process. I haven't been through, obviously, coming from private to public, but.
Commissioner, what that is, is once you decide on the candidate that you want to offer the job, then we start the contract negotiation with that candidate and then bring back the contract to the board to make changes or accept it, the, the contract negotiations. It's just staff talking to the candidate, to the selected candidate with the job offer and start negotiations, negotiations of that contract.
And can that not, can we not specify our legal department staff? We still have two people left in the legal department after Al leaves. I don't know that I'm okay with the administrator or anyone she designates negotiating that. I would like to see it say the legal staff.
It's normally a function that it's a combination between HR and legal in this case. But perhaps if you have, let's say, both current employees apply for this position, then we have to negotiate with them.
I can refer back as another option. When we were hiring a school board superintendent, we nominated the chair to be the lead negotiator. And that person then worked with the legal department and administration. Because it's kind of odd, as you move forward, everybody's working together as a team, but they're, ultimately, these are our, you know, the one of the two employees that we hire. So I think we have to have representation from, from the board in that process. So in the past, it's been the chair. But the, again, I'll leave that as just something that I've encountered in the past if you want to proceed with that.
Well, I would like a representative, definitely from the board.
Yeah, makes sense.
I think board would be.
To sit in on that. There's, not that everybody's going to catch it. To my knowledge, you've not had experience yet hiring a legal, a lawyer. Is that right? You've not personally had experience.
No, not, no, not here.
Right. So I, I think having a small team or a small, you know, whatever, group of people. Oh, Lord, I am so sorry. On that, and.
We can't have a group of commissioners, so.
I understand that. One person from the, representing the board.
Right.
And in my prior experience, when it came to public, where, where the interviews taking place in the public, do we not have to all ask the same question of every applicant? Sean, do you know? Or?
No, you don't have to.
You don't?
No. Now, when HR does interviews, yes, from a staff perspective, but you're the elected representatives of the public, and you can ask them whatever you like.
All right, that's it.
Yeah, we've been through this when we did, hired a county administrator. And the one-on-ones, you're, you're free to ask anything you want.
I think they do it only so they can gauge the responses from one to the other. But it, you know, I think there's some, be able to do a little bit of freelancing in that, too, depending on how they answer.
Yeah, I, I think having a board representative makes sense. And I've also already instructed my team to request some contracts from surrounding counties to give you guys an example of what other counties' contracts look like with their attorneys. That'll be a good, like, reference point. Obviously, you have yours, your current one with Al, but I figured it'd be good to have a variety of contracts for you guys to look at. Or if, if it's, you know, you appointed to the, the team, that'd be good.
Is there any problem with the chair doing it, or do you?
Well, I would like to do it.
So.
But if you want to do it, I'm, it's fine, but.
Okay.
I bring a lot of, I bring a lot of experience in this area to that, so. But Ms. Chairman, it's your call.
Any other thoughts?
Is this your last slide?
No, I have another, another slide.
I have a question for after, thanks.
I think ultimately, you guys, you would all review it. Whatever you were, whoever negotiates it, you guys will all review the end product, and I'm sure you can share your thoughts.
That's how I feel. Once it comes back to the board, it's fair, fair game.
Fair for you to review it.
All right. Very good. Okay.
Okay, awesome.
I guess looking back at that timeline, let's look again from the date that Al is resigning to bring the contract back to the B O C C. Is that cutting us a little bit close to get somebody here in time to?
To train with him, yeah. Leave him about a month, a little less than a month, probably.
They might want to shrink the timeline, is my thought, a little bit. So there's more room after the.
I think even if you shrink this timeline, I was thinking that was your, Al's leaving and taking time off, he said, in, at the end. So I almost, it's because we've taken so long to even get here, knowing, between knowing Al's leaving, we lost the time for him to have time with Al. Because, because they may have to give notice wherever they're leaving from.
We can shrink the time, especially the.
Well, he's got a 30-day putout, say, May 1st, right? Or somewhere in there. Then you got a 30-day open. And then from, so that's going to put you to the end of May regardless for that job search. And then, well, you've kind, you've given yourself not much time to look through and rank them, a week. So I don't, I don't know. Where are you gonna, you might, you might pick up time somewhere there, maybe pull up the one-on-ones by two weeks, but.
Yeah, there's, that's the only slop in it, right there. Is if you, from the invite applicants for interviews, that date, and then B O C panel interviews. There's three weeks in there.
We're out of town. Are we not out of town at FAC?
In June.
Yeah, that's why they pushed it to 6:30.
30 days from now is May.
6:30.
30 days from now is May something.
I think whoever gets hired is not going, if, if it even is an outside person or whatever, but was not going to get a lot of institutional knowledge with just law, you know, unless.
Well, that was my, that was going to be, that was going to be my question is are we open to hiring a law firm to sit in on an interim basis, maybe a month or two, to evaluate what we missed? Like, I mean, I'm sure Sean is up to speed on some of the items, but he's going to take everything with him. But could we not get a firm in here? Just like the other, the municipalities hire firm lawyers. They don't hire staff lawyers.
I feel like that's what Palm Coast did, and it's not.
It says what?
It's not what Palm Coast has done, hired a firm lawyer and.
They've had a lawyer there.
We all do it.
Up to a firm for years.
They all do it.
For years.
It would just be an interim to get the new person. What if they onboard, accept our contract? You're expecting them to be on duty. When? July 15th?
August. The only thing he could shorten here that might help is when he goes out for 30 days, it could be shortened to a 15-day, and you might get two weeks back.
You can always hire Al. Hire Al to come back.
No, he said he's.
He's done.
And I think we do have two seasoned people in the office.
Very.
But that's a good question. Could we open it to a firm? Could, well, I'm just saying, could we open it to a firm?
Process. Let's, I think we have plenty of time. And then I would invite us looking at the timeline to shrink it somewhat and bring it back to us. But the, I think that would solve it. I think the other, going another route overly complicates the process. And, and hopefully, Sean also applies and, and there's a potential. We don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, as far as institutional.
So a lot occurs on 6:30. Maybe we can find a sooner date, you know, for that date.
All right. Thank you.
Hang on, there's two more, yeah. Obviously, when it comes to job posting, you have to think about salary ranges. So I listed some of the neighboring counties, and then I listed on the bottom and who are highlighted. When Finance did that report, I think it was a couple of years ago, they compared us to a few different counties. And those four there are the main ones they compared us to. So I just wanted to, you know, give you guys an idea of what similar counties, similar size from census data or what their county attorneys are making. And then my recommended posting range could be 175 to 250.
Yeah, we're slightly bigger than Nassau. I'm kind of shocked to see St. John's, and I know Volusia's a huge county.
I was going to say, does it go per capita?
I believe the Finance report that they did with the four on the bottom was related to, you know, census data. Or B L S data, rather.
That's the right range, because based on those four in the mean. Yeah.
I think it gives you, I, I think it's good to have a range. I know some of these postings for contracts haven't had them in other areas and even some cities. I think it's important to put a range and, you know, let that person have a good understanding of what they could make here. So it's a contract, but, um. There we go, any other questions? Anything else you want me to look into or?
Want to give him a budget for travel? Or do you want to wait?
I guess we could do it when we come up with our top five.
See how far away they are.
At that, at that meeting.
Would we pull it from?
Have something prepared.
The commission budget?
We can find money internally, whether it's in HR or pooled or something.
Yeah, I have a little bit of money set aside for postings and I don't know if we'll spend that and then maybe, we can find it.
Okay. All right, very good, any other questions?
Just, we never discussed outsourcing, like taking it to a professional firm as opposed to, not lawyer firm, but search firm. We haven't, as a county, done this in a long time. There's some experience both ways, you know, using a search firm and not using a search firm. Are we convinced that this is the way that's going to work best for Flagler County?
So I was thinking up until, you know, that that might be part of this discussion, but when I saw it, you're going to post it at FAC and into those things, I'm hopeful. But if you don't see, I think we're going to need an update. If you don't see us getting quality within the first 10 days.
Right.
Then we need to know, hey, I'm not getting it, the applications coming in, I'm not getting the quality of what we wanted, and then maybe we can make a interim decision.
Having a Plan B, you know, we might need, and I don't know what kind of outfit does this. I don't know if you know who they are, but you might want to just become familiar with a Plan B if this doesn't work.
Sure.
Yeah, if you, if you just don't see the quality you're posting, they have some options midway through that 30-day for us to, just so we know, hey, it's not going well, or it's not where we thought we'd be at.
Sounds good, we'll do that.
I do have one quick question. So with those various things, is there going to be a cutoff of? I know when you post jobs, like, you're going to have a cutoff in there of, cut us off after 100 apply? Or is, is, are you going to have any issues like that, where you're going to get a bunch of?
I, I don't, I mean, with this kind of position, I don't think we'd have that many applicants, but.
Some of those sites cut off.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, we don't have any, we won't have a cutoff on limited, you know, number of applicants. But I think with a job like this, I, I don't, I don't think we'll be flooded with applicants. Am I wrong?
30 days still seems like a long.
They got a hairdresser for the city manager, so.
Yeah, I know.
People apply for.
Yeah, and like those, and that you wouldn't have to worry about. I mean, like, our department would sort those out of the process.
Yeah, I just know that sometimes they cut off, like Indeed does, like, they get a cap unless you pay for a higher posting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And will we get them as they come through your department? Or do we just get an invite to the portal to look at them all at once?
Yeah, what I can do is add you to the portal, and then you can see any of the ones that are moved to, you know.
Meets qualifications?
Meets qualifications, exactly, yeah. And it'll give you, you know, the ones that were put into not qualified. And then I can show you, you know, who met the qualifications, you can look through them as they go and come in. I'll get with my team and give you access.
Do we want to mess with the 30 days to shrink things up? I think 30 days is kind of a long time, but.
Yeah, I was thinking if you're really trying to shrink the.
Could definitely go three weeks.
Yeah.
What's the thoughts?
If you're trying to get them in here sooner.
Well, not when we're advertising, not when we're advertising.
We're going right into it on the 24th.
Yeah, just two days, 23rd.
23rd, so I would say three weeks.
Okay, as you modify, you can go down to three weeks if you think it fits better.
We may have to extend it if we don't have enough applicants that.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at it, yeah, exactly.
All right, all right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Ms. Petita, we're going to move into the beach management update.
We're going to have engineering go over an update of some of the projects that we've been working on. I know I had sent an email probably three weeks ago, maybe coming up on four. At your last board meeting, we had given you a grant application. It was for the 4.4 million, had the local match of 4.4 showing an $8.8 million dune project. That project was for Hammock Dunes area, section of the beach. What we wanted to go over today is kind of just provide an update of some of the other dune projects that we have planned ahead of hurricane season and ahead of the actual beach and dune rebuilding. And to provide an update on where we're at with Reach Two and Reach Three, which is part of the beach and dune construction work. So it's two different things. You have update on the dune and beach work, and then an update on some of those emergency protective measures or emergency dune work that we're doing ahead of the storm. And then we have some information on Hurricane Milton, Cat G, projects as part of that. So we thought it might be easier just to handle it through a workshop rather than kind of individual piecemeal, because some of these items you're going to see coming to you on your board agenda. So we'll turn it over to Hamed and Ansley.
Hi, good afternoon, Ansley Rindke, Coastal Administrator. Yeah, so, let me get started here. Pointer's going to work, let me, all right. Yep, so I just put together a slide here, the overview and history of how we got here today. So in 2003, a comprehensive feasibility study by the Army Corps was initiated, as you all are familiar. And in 2014, that Army Corps feasibility study said the 2.6 miles of the city of Flagler Beach met their criteria for the coastal storm risk management project. Moving forward, okay, that was 2014, we had several hurricanes. We had Matthew, 2016, Irma, Dorian, as you can see on the slide there. So several hurricanes started to erode our coastline and create a situation where we need to intervene and rebuild our coastline. So you can see some highlighted dates here, 2018, F D O T said they would fund the project along A1A, which is outside of the federal project that was, met the criteria for the Corps. And then 2019, the board established the consensus to initiate the work necessary to develop a comprehensive beach management plan for the 18 miles. After that, they hired Olson and Associates, which is now F O S Olson, to conduct that beach management study. And they were going to make recommendations to the county, what they needed to do to implement, implement the long-term beach management plan. So we got those results from Olson-F O S in 2022. We came forward with the beach management plan for the 18 miles in 2023 that the board adopted. That's a living document that we're still working on. And some of that we'll go over today of how we want to implement the projects in that beach management plan. The first project was what we call Reach One, and that's 20, that was completed in 2024. So that was finally the Army Corps of Engineers project that came to fruition and was implemented. So the beach management plan, again, was adopted in October 2023 by the board. And this was developed to basically restore the coast, protect the coast. And this was for 18 miles of coastline. And part of that beach management study was to recommend to the board what they needed to do, what we needed to do in order to do all of these things. So the first thing was establish governance. Who was going to administer this beach management program for the 18 miles? We need to identify and establish a local funding source that's continuing to, to be ongoing right now. The next three bullets below that were to map all of the outcropping rock, which is all pretty much located in Reach Three and Reach Four. We will be hiring our consultant very soon to start work on that. Access feasibility of the different sand delivery methods. So we've been working on that. We have a dredge project coming up in Reach Two. Initiate a detailed design investigation of a selected plan. So that's, those three will be started soon and really focus on the Reach Three. And we need to investigate how best to re-nourish that area because of the hard bottom there. So we also have moved forward with expanding the borrow area, which is right adjacent to the Army Corps of Engineers borrow area that was just used. We're working with Bohm right now to secure that lease agreement. We are pursuing expanding the regulatory permits in order to do dredge offshore sand projects in all the areas where we have permits now. We're working with the county attorney's office to secure long-term perpetual easements. Reach Two, we're halfway done as far as what I've heard with securing those easements. And then we'll be going north to Reach Three and Reach Four to get perpetual easements, because we have a long-term plan, we need to have long-term easements to do the work. And then we also have been talking with F D E P to reassess the critically eroded areas. There's a designation at F D E P called critically eroded designation, where you can apply to get up to 50% cost share. And that application goes through the local government funding grant program. Every year, they've, they fund different projects in this program. We applied for our first local government funding grant last year, and we will, should be receiving part of the $50 million, which is funding F D E P's beach program this year. Those will go to Reach Two, those funds will go to Reach Two. And then we've also requested to have a new Army Corps of Engineers feasibility study conducted. And we've been working with our federal lobbyists and also writing letters for that. We don't know, I don't know, Hamed, Hamed's worked, been working on that one, so we may have an update on that. As far as I know, we don't have an answer on that yet. And then we have also been working with the T D C to look at beach access areas and parking, and we'll be continuing to work on that as well. So that's just a summary of where we are in our beach management plan. And then I'll go forward and talk about some details of how to implement this. And this clicker still does not want to work. Let me get through this. And I don't know why these are phasing in so slow. Where, where am I supposed to point this in order to make this work faster? Okay, there we go, so we have the full slide. All right, so Reach One, you can see in the green, that was the federal project that was just completed in 2024. The blue area on either side of the federal project is what we're calling Reach Two. So it's everywhere that we can use offshore sand resources to re-nourish the beach. We have a permit in that area, or we're almost, we have F D E P permit in the entire area, all the way up to Varn Park. We're working to modify our Army Corps of Engineers permit north of the city of Flagler Beach to include Beverly Beach, Painters Hill, and Varn Park. We expect to have that Army Corps of Engineers permit and a Bohm lease for Reach Two project to re-nourish that five and a half miles by the end of June, and then we'll go out to bid. North of that, you can see Reach Three, that's the yellow area. We are going to be presenting to you tonight professional services agreement to work with Moffett and Nickel and move forward with all of the biological studies that need to be conducted to basically map out all the hard bottom areas, determine the biological importance of that area, and do a alternative analysis to determine how best to re-nourish that area because of the hard bottom issues. And then north of that, north of Washington Oaks State Park, you can see the 2.7 miles is Reach Four. There's extensive beach rock in this area, and so the best way to protect this area, we've determined to be dune maintenance. So this is how we plan to implement the 18 miles of our beach management plan to restore the coastline. And then if you look down below, you can see the boxes where we have the different small projects in Reach Three. So it's denoted as Reach Three A, Reach Three B, and then so on and so forth, Three C and Three D. These are going to be some interim dune-only projects that we have received funding for. I'll go over some of the details when I get to the slides on these projects. And you can see some of the details here. Most of these projects are going to be six cubic yards per foot. So this is intended to be more of an emergency temporary dune project. Again, basically restoring the dune that we built in 2023, and we've had erosion since 2023. So we want to restore that temporary sacrificial sand to protect the area until we get the larger beach nourishment project. Okay, so back to Reach Two, the large beach nourishment project. This is going to be 5.5 miles of coastline from as close as we can get to the pier, because we intend that, I mean, they're going to be rebuilding the pier, so we don't, we can't get too close. We'll get as close as we can to the pier and go all the way to Varn Park, just north of Varn Park to R46. This is where the hard bottom begins, so we can't go any further north than that. We're going to put 1.8 million cubic yards of sand in that area. So it would be comparable to the Army Corps project in scale. Again, we're working on our permits, we intend to have them by the end of June. The cost estimate's about, well, we're estimating it to be $36 million. And this is again a five and a half mile project. However, there's another alternative that I think we've discussed and we want to go forward with. And that would be adding in the southern section down around where our South taper was, around Snack Jack's area, and continuing all the way down to Volusia County. That would make this project seven miles of coastline being restored, approximately $2 million of offshore sand resources. These are basically two options. So this option we can move forward with right now with the permits we have in hand. This is what we've talked to Bohm about in our lease application. We are moving forward with that, again, permits hopefully be in place at June 30th. We'll put it out for bid at that point with two options. First option is just the five and a half miles. The second option would be to add the southern section. And in order to be able to use the same contractor, the way we're going to do it is have alternate one and alternate two. Alternate two will be an additional three and a half, well, basically 350,000 cubic yards of volume. So they just need to give us a price on the extra volume. We anticipate it to be around $40 million. This would not be able to be built until spring of 2026. Okay, so the first alternate possibly, you know, could be built this year, getting started in October. If we go with alternative, alternative two, this would give us time to go back to Bohm and add in the additional volume and re-modify our lease agreement in order to do the southern section. But it does take time, and so we wouldn't be able to build this till 2026. I can answer any questions on that, I know it's a little confusing. So, oh, good gosh, now this thing's really getting sensitive. Went to the, okay. What is going on with this thing? Another way to change, can somebody flip through these? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, so that's Reach Two Beach Nourishment Project.
Can I go back real quick on Reach Two?
Sure.
On the added-on area in front of the Gamble Rogers seawall?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how else to say this. It's a state seawall. They have to cover it, right? They have to maintain the sand on the sea because it's a submerged seawall. That's part of the deal when you put in a submerged seawall.
Correct.
You cover it.
FDOT is building a dune in front of it.
And who is?
FDOT will maintain a dune, a dune feature.
Correct. So what we're trying to do is extend it to include the beach?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So the benefit to the coastline is a continuous. I just saw released that Volusia County is now starting their CCANT wall, which will probably tie into this one. I'm not sure how close it is, but it looks like it's very close to this one.
Pretty much continuous, yeah.
Right. So why wouldn't we just let the state take the lead on that and build their own beach if they want one? I don't see any benefit to our government, to our tourists, to anything by adding that little glitch in the current plan. I thought it was going to be done at the same time as Two. But now it looks like you're pushing it out. Not you personally, but that we're pushing it out?
Okay, so Reach Two was originally just the five and a half mile area from north of the pier to R46, right? Sorry, this area right here in the red. And when our plans, you know, were presented at different public meetings, some of the folks that lived down in the larger condo areas south of Gamble Rogers wanted to have meetings with FDOT, with county officials, with the city of Flagler Beach Commissioner, Scott Bradley. And there was a lot of discussions about wanting to include a beach area for the people.
So this has Costa de Sol, Ocean View, the Nautilus, though, not the Nautilus, sorry.
All the, yeah, that area.
All of the above?
Yeah.
The Nautilus, I'm sorry.
Right. And so, you know, I would come to you and say, we need guidance and how do we want to proceed?
So there is a benefit then. It's not just Gamble Rogers State Park. It's more than that. It includes
Oh, yeah.
territory in Flagler Beach. Okay, thank you.
Now, Kim, your predecessor got a lot of, lot of heat because we weren't putting sand there. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I got a question. Has there always been sand there? Has there always been a beach there? Because I don't remember ever seeing one in a long time.
Before the wall or?
In the last 15 years, has there been sand?
It's been eroded, just the same as the city of Flagler Beach. But when the Army Corps came in and rebuilt the beach, you know, north of them, they said, well, where's our beach? But it's been highly eroded, just how it was north of there. So now they're getting a wall and a dune is what was built there and not a beach.
And who's paying for that?
FDOT paid for the wall and the dune, and they're going to maintain the dune. Every year, they have some money that they're going to give to the county.
So why are we even addressing this at this point? That's my question.
For the beach.
They want the beach that they don't have.
There's no beach.
But there hasn't been one.
Oh, yeah, there was before the hurricanes. There was a beach there.
Well, that's, I'm looking for the timeframe of when the beach disappeared.
Oh, okay, yeah. When Hurricane Matthew started really the unraveling and the high erosion rate, the acceleration of all of this erosion, yeah. And so everywhere, we have a plan to re-nourish the beach, except for the, you know, northern Reach Four. We're only building a dune there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's about $4 million to include, what, about 1.7 miles from right there?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So there's an option one and a two.
Yes.
Right. If we want to include down there, it's $4 million in addition.
Yes, that's correct.
To give them a beach.
All right, and then moving north to Reach Three. So we need to start the environmental studies, look at the alternatives of how to design and build a nourishment project to restore the coast there. We'll be moving forward with hiring our new consultant, Moffett and Nickel, to do all of these studies and the permitting for us. You'll see that presented to you tonight at the regular meeting. The schedule for this would be to start the field studies as soon as possible and then submit our permit application in quarter four of this year. And then after that, we have the regulatory review that we have to go through. And we're predicting 18 months, but we don't know how long it'll actually take. It could take longer. So we would love to start that project in 2027 if all goes well with the regulatory agencies and with getting our permits.
Question.
Yes.
Is there a similar beach ecosystem or environment that has been permitted somewhere else up the East Coast? So we have an idea of what, what we're looking at for mitigation?
So this is really unique. We have a Coquina Rock outcroppings. It's not a coral reef system, which is more typical of South Florida. And then where I'm from in South Carolina, we have similar situations, but it's a little further offshore in the nearshore area. And they do it the same way. I mean, you've got to go out there and you've got to have divers. You've got to look at what's growing, determine the importance of that hard bottom habitat. Is it establishing an essential fish habitat? So sometimes you can have a very productive area where you've got a lot of fish and it's sustaining the ecosystem. And then that's when you've got National Marine Fisheries saying that this is a highly protected area and we can't impact that.
But this isn't repeated in St. John's County anywhere that you know of?
Not that I know of. They don't have this issue. This is really unique to Flagler.
Okay, I was just trying to see if we had a, something similar that, you know, anywhere from Brevard up.
That would be great to just work with them and get some advice on how they approached it, but.
Okay.
Heidi, there's, there's two arguments here. One is, as she very eloquently displayed, is whether or not those rocks are actual habitat or whether they're just there. And in favor of them being just there, they weren't there before Matthew. Matthew uncovered them. There were no, there was not a rock issue prior to Matthew. So Matthew uncovered them. And Heidi and I went to DEP and made the case that God uncovered them. Please let us cover them back. It didn't go over well. We didn't, they didn't buy that. So, but that's whether or not there is actual habitat for fish and whatever on those rocks, we won't know until somebody goes, goes and looks.
And part of the rocks, and we have made this case with FDEP, some of those rocks are covered and uncovered on a regular basis. And they're classified differently than the hard bottom that's always, you know, outcropping there and has more growth on it. When you have stuff that's covered and uncovered, not much can grow on it, except for like turf grass and stuff.
So we will, we'll, through this study, through this contract that we're going to approve tonight, or we should be approving it, we will be able to identify and a large portion of this contract is to identify that hard bottom?
Yeah, there, yes, there'll be a map.
Do they go to fight with us at DEP? Or do we just take their data and take it to DEP?
So when we hire them, they are going to get out in the field and they're going to map it and they're going to do the diving. And then they will be working with FDEP all along the way to establish. Because I had a meeting with them and they said, we're so unique in our situation that FDEP actually wants to work with them to establish how to monitor this.
Okay.
I've got an off-the-well thought, too. The only time I've ever seen this type of erosion being a Floridian. I was in North Carolina after, I was on the beach. I had a friend who had a beach house and we were there, and that drop was huge. Have we ever like looked at other parts of the East Coast other than outside of Florida? Because they had a horrible situation.
Yes.
And they did replace their beach. They did have to build steps to go down from the private homes that I was in. It was like a fall in.
Right. No, I'm very familiar with the Carolina beaches. I did all my dissertation work in North Carolina. I was a professor in South Carolina, right around Myrtle Beach area. Yep. And so very familiar with all of that area and all that they've had to do.
Well, I'm thrilled that you've been there because it was a very strange situation in my, my life to see that. So I was there right after that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, and so let's talk about these small interim truck haul projects that we're going to do. So we're kind of back to the temporary projects until we can get our permits to do the large beach nourishment project. So moving forward now, we have the FDEP grant 25 FL1 that's been executed. And we have the $8.8 million through FDEP, requires a 50% local match. So HDOA Hammock Dunes Nourish Association and Flagler County will be splitting the $4.4 million required for that local match. We have Eastman aggregates. We're still under contract with them for dune projects. And so because time is of the essence, we'll be working with them again to do this project to save a lot of time and get this on the ground before hurricane season. Here's a picture, a couple pictures of the eroded dune that unfortunately we built in 2023 that extended out to where the steps are on that walkover. If you can see that walkover and all the empty void underneath it, that kind of gives you an idea of how much volume has been eroded since the last time we did this in 2023. So again, time is of the essence. We need to do an emergency project until we can get the comprehensive beach nourishment permits. Moving forward from Hammock Dunes, we're looking at funding another project through two FDEP agreements that we have in place. And we will be working with the Ocean Hammock Property Owners Association and the Hammock Beach Resort to require them to pay 20, approximately 25% of the project. We want to replace the sand that was lost there. And we think it's going to be about six cubic yards per foot in order to replace that sand. That's a two-mile project. And then moving north of there, we have a FEMA CATG project that's under review right now. I have a lot of confidence that this will get funded in the full amount of 115,000 cubic yards of sand. We'll be able to put six cubic yards per foot in all of the area from Malacampa Park all the way up to Washington State Park. And then moving north throughout all of Reach Four. And the cost for that project should be about $10 million, and we will be required to pay 12.5% for the local match. FEMA and FDEM will pay the remainder. We hope to be done with these projects before we get a storm. We want to start as soon as possible because they're all subsequent to each other. We'll be starting at Varn Park and working north through Hammock Dunes and then Ocean Hammock up through the resort and then the FEMA project from Malacampa Park all the way up to River to Sea Park after that. These are pictures from the northern part of the county around Marineland Acres. And so again, just these pictures indicate the erosion and the need for the emergency project. We've been in discussions with Washington State Park. They also want us to include a project in their area. So they'll be funding this at 100% and adding approximately $1.3 million to a agreement that we have now for them to get their dune built in this area. Okay, so with that, that's the details of all the projects. I don't know if you have any questions. It's a lot of information.
That starts pretty soon, right? We're days away from starting that.
Yes, so we want to start in a month. All right, there was a question at a previous board meeting about using the TDT funds and what areas would be eligible. So just wanted to put a slide in here to show you this map that Amy Lacosik has been working on. She's been working with GIS. We've been in discussions with Sean, our deputy county attorney as well. And this is just zooming in on the upper part of the coastline. So Reach Four, Three, and then going into Reach Two. These are all the public accesses that you can see with the, basically the P, right? The circle with the blue area. Those are all our county parks where we have public access. And TDC is very familiar with the statutes, where we can spend the money. We have to have public accesses where we're spending these tourism dollars. And then we also want to spend the money, I think it's a desire to spend the money, where you have the tourism, right? And so Amy has put on this map all of those like hot pink colored little cross areas. Those are where all the Airbnbs are and where all the short-term rentals are located. And so if you look at the blue kind of, sorry, strips along the coastline there, basically we're looking at a half mile in each direction from your public access areas. And then also how that lines up with where all the short-term rentals are located and where these tourism dollars are coming in. And so I'll continue to work with TDC and we'll continue to explore where the eligible areas are. I would say this is a work in progress at this point.
So this is a new map just created and generated. So how does this change the funding plan that was presented to us?
I would say right now, nothing would be changed. Again, this is very preliminary, so I can't speak to that at this point.
The goal is, is to achieve the every half mile parking and access. And that makes us eligible for, if we can get a long stretch, it makes us eligible for Corps of Engineer funding. So that's the point of this.
Okay, so moving forward, and that is my last slide. So if there's any questions in general, be happy to answer them. Thank you.
No, no, yeah, I guess it's a question. Could we get a copy of that slide, that last slide? Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. Hameed Tabassian, I just wanted to add a few words on Reach Two, which is from north Seventh Street to Varn Park. And Aunt Sli mentioned phasing the project. She has been in coordination with the dredging contractors and industry. And they indicated that probably next year in 2026, the bids would be more favorable. So what we are planning on to basically anticipate to have this project, which is right now modifying the permit that we have to extend the project to Varn Park, which is the five and a half miles from north Seventh Street to Varn Park for dredging. And bid it with the option to implement in '25, which would perhaps start in October?
At the very earliest.
October, November of this year. Or get the bids for that same project to be implemented in '26. And then once the bids come in, we would come and, you know, have a determination and your decision as to whether we want to implement the project this year or next year. If it's next year, then we would have the option. We would also add request bids for an optional bid to be exercised if we want to add that sudden reach, which requires some additional permitting and modification of the Bohm lease agreement for that additional sense to be dredged. So if we are going to be implementing the project next year, we would have the option to expand it and include the beach nourishment for that. for that southern county line portion as well. So I just wanted to, there were some questions there that want to make sure that this is what the plan is. And hopefully we'll be able to come in August. Right now, we are legal, is working on basically obtaining all the easements that have been sent out for execution. And we have had very good favorable responses that have come in. And in addition, still the Army Corps of Engineers and Bohm-Leh's agreement are in the final stages. Unfortunately, we don't have it yet. We were expecting to have that by now, but that is going to be July. So as soon as the permit comes in and we have the easements, we'll have the invitation to bid package ready to put out and request those two optional bids and see what our options are going to be.
I have a question on the timing.
Yeah.
You're talking about getting the sand out there in October, just in time for the season. That doesn't even add up in my head, but maybe I'm not knowledgeable enough to know that one storm could just destroy everything we just put back there, right? Am I wrong?
Unfortunately, like you said, it will be in the hurricane season at the time. But once we, if everything goes as planned and we have the bids in, say, August, these things doesn't happen immediately. So it may be December or even maybe January of '26 before the actual work starts. Once it does, it happens and gets finished rapidly. So it may take-
That gives me a little more comfort. That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Ansley, when will the permit be complete for the southern section by the county line?
That area is already permitted.
It's already permitted?
Yeah.
So we're not waiting on anything?
That area is permitted, but if we want to have a dredge project there, we could do a truck haul, no problem. If we want to have a dredge project there, we have to go through Bohm. We will have to modify our lease agreement, and so that will take some time. I would say three months if we went back and started that process now.
Okay.
And then it's not clear if the Army Corps of Engineers is going to require any type of modification to the existing permit right now.
Okay, so that, and are there any easements required for the south section?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So have we started that or are we waiting for direction?
We're waiting for direction.
Okay, and if you were to handle that by itself, would the mobilization just for that southern half probably make that unrealistic to do?
Yes.
So we're trying to do it with the first part of Reach 2. So that in one contract, the contractor's already mobilized out offshore and everything.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, I don't know that we have a lot of options because I think we've, right? I think the southern, the southern part, since we're working on a continuous 18 miles of beach improvement, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to eliminate the southern part from the overall plan of improving the 18 miles of the coast. So that would kind of, the schedule kind of determines when that's going to be ready to do the additional Reach 2. Obviously, I would prefer to get Reach 2 on the northern part of the pier done faster. But if the economies of scale dictate that the southern portion is included, then it may be spring of '26 by the time everything lines up, you're saying?
Yeah, that's correct. So as I mean, mentioned, we talked to the dredging, or I talked to the dredging industry, and I got three different contractors to basically have a teams meeting with me so I could feel out what their schedules are like. And the three out of three all told me that there's limited availability for this year. And if we wanted to get favorable pricing, we should do it in March of 2026, between March and May of 2026. That's the feedback I got from the dredging industry. And so if we wanted to add in the southern section, we would have time to renegotiate our lease with Bohm.
Okay. And you need us to decide on something this evening?
No, we don't have to decide this evening.
Okay.
Okay.
That was my question, was what was it about the dredging industry that showed a favorable towards 2026? But you just answered it. And because FDOT funded so much of Reach 1 and Reach 2, I think this 2A or this southern portion, I think we just need to negotiate more on that. We're going to be buddies with FDOT on those two reaches for the rest of our lives. So I think we just need to build up some momentum, give them some data and beg. I mean, basically, they should be participating in both, in all of two, not just the northern two, but also that southern two. So let's not give up on that, and it will also give us some more time for negotiations.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, Ansley, do we have to do more core sampling out there?
Not in the borough area, no.
Yeah, we did a lot, $450,000.
Yes, we got 50 cores.
All right, good.
Yeah, so we're good.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify, Commissioner Carney, DOT is already contributing on the south half, right? For coverage on the wall?
From our discussions early on with FDOT, they were committed to putting money aside every year for just the dune area in front of their seawalls. I think we do need to probably go back and revisit the amount. But I did want to clarify something in case I missed it. In order to make that southern piece viable, it needs to be contiguous with the federal project and the tapers. So if we were to include that small piece in front of the southern condos, we would have to continue to work with DEP to come up with the funding for Gamble Rogers, which would be another reason potentially to make it viable because it needs to continue. If not, I don't think that Bohm would look favorably at the sand. So it just gives us an opportunity to continue that dialogue with DEP for that park.
That's correct, yeah. They, Bohm did not like the fact that we were just going to put a small little, what they called blip of sand down there at the end of the county. So they said it does need to be continuous from the federal project all the way to the county line.
Right, and you'll see, the tourism app isn't going to show the little pink squares, but the entirety of Gamble Rogers Park is basically short-term rentals on a continuous basis with the campsites. And so I think the beach has to be continuous along that, you know, in front of them as well.
And I can include the request for Gamble Rogers funds in the local government funding request this year, too. And they'll be able to match that, not match it 50%, though they should pay it 100%.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna, I know I didn't go back earlier on public comment, but I think it's prudent just to kind of hit each of these as we go along. So if anybody had county attorney position comments or beach management update comments, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. So if anybody had comment on these two items, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment. All right, nobody. We will move on to fire rescue department presentation. Chief Tucker.
Well, good afternoon, Chair members of the commission. It's really great to be here, as always, to be able to come in and brag about the department, talk about the department. So I know we need to be out here by 3:30, so I'll try to cut this, you know, as short as possible. So as you received before the meeting today, there was a report, there was for staffing analysis and a report for station location analysis. So this presentation is going to sort of combine those two into one. I've got a lot of ground to cover, so I'm going to, I'm going to move pretty quick. But if you have any questions, feel free to stop me, obviously, so. Okay, obviously, the purpose of the presentation is to provide an understanding of our current station location and status of those stations. And provide an understanding of future station location considerations, provide an understanding of what an effective response force is and how it impacts our operations, to provide an understanding of the factors impacting levels of service and what different levels of service look like, provide a recommendation for future staffing, and provide recommendations for future staffing locations. I forgot where I'm supposed to point this thing. Yeah, obviously, station location is a matter of time, you know, it's distance. You know, the reality is physics supply to response. We can only drive so fast, and the speed limits and traffic patterns dictate, you know, how far we can get in a given period of time. So station location has a lot to do with distance and time. Proper placement ensures a timely response, you know. So when they're strategically placed, they can respond with an initial arriving, that first arriving unit, and they can support each other with additional response units as well. And then obviously, staffing is a matter of getting enough personnel to the scene to mitigate, you know, the emergency. And not every emergency is the same. You know, a cardiac arrest requires a given number of people. A fully involved structured fire requires a larger number of responders to the scene. So not every single emergency is the same, but the number of people that come together to mitigate the emergency is what we refer to as an effective response force. And we'll walk through some of those numbers as we do, continue with the presentation. And collectively, you put those two numbers together, those two factors together, you know, to increase your potential or your liability or potential for success. Excuse me, so as we look at station location considerations, generally, there's a couple of different things that we look at. Obviously, I think many people are aware of the insurance services organization commonly called ISO. You know, their factors they look at are five road mile coverage polygons from the station outward. And then obviously, water supply, hydrant location, static water sources, things like that. The National Fire Protection Association standards, which generally covers response times and effective response force. They primarily look at four-minute, eight-minute response times or what they call drive times or travel times. And then the time it takes to assemble that effective response force, whether it's three people, whether it's 17, or whether it's 46 people. And then obviously, you try to factor in the population centers, where things are growing within the county. And you try to plan out in advance of understanding what's coming. And then the risk, you know, that you're facing. Residential properties are a different risk profile than industrial properties. You know, so you try to build around all of these factors together. And then you throw in the geography of the community, you know, whether it's the railroads, the interstates, the waterways, the things that impede your travel or make things challenging, you know. Just to give you an idea of where distance versus time, this was actually a formula that was developed by the RAND Corporation in the late 70s in conjunction with the Fire Department of New York, FDNY. And they mathematically, at a vehicle traveling at 35 miles per hour, you can do, three miles will take you about five minutes and 54 seconds. And again, it just progresses from there. So if as an agency, we say we want to give a five-mile coverage area, our travel time is about nine minutes and 24 seconds. Again, address is relative to response time. And this graph just gives you an idea of how many homes we have, properties, 911 addresses. We have within a four-minute, six-minute, and greater than a six-minute travel time from Flagler County for our rescue stations. This does not factor in any Palm Coast or Flagler Beach stations, you know. So we got to have numbers up here, but I'll give you the locations that they are within the county because a lot of people correlate, you know, the community to the station. But Engine 16 is on Old Dixie. It actually physically sits within Volusia County. It's a station that Volusia County built. We operate it. Engine 40 is within Hammock. Engine 51 is in Espinola. Engine 50 is here in Bonnell. And then Engine 57 is in St. John's Park. And, you know, so again, you're looking at the number of addresses, the 911 addresses, not populations that are within four minutes, six minutes, and greater than six-minute travel times. When you talk about response time, there are actually four different components that you need to think about. Initially, it's the call processing time. That's the time from when the communicator picks up the telephone until they dispatch, you know, the unit. Then there's the turnout time, the tons go off in the station till the time the crews are in the truck and moving. And then there's a travel time, which is essentially from the station to the scene of the emergency. Generally referred to that as a curb-to-curb time. Response time is a factor of the turnout time plus the travel time. Total response time is call processing time plus turnout time plus travel time. And this does not account for the pre-911 initiation call until somebody discovers that there is an emergency and they need assistance. And just to make it a little bit easier, I gave you a picture of what all of those words, you know, said. Again, it's just, you look at all of these, and there's pieces of it that we can control. Obviously, travel time, if we're proper placement of stations, gives us the ability to affect travel time. You know, when you talk about turnout times, that's the piece that we can control as an agency. That's getting to the truck as quickly as possible. Properly designed fire station so that you're not putting the apparatus on the far end of the station from where the crews are at. Making sure that they flow from the cruise quarters out to the trucks are well-designed. Again, this graph, it just gives you an idea of what happens when there is a fire. At about, from about zero minutes to about a minute and a half, fire begins to grow. If there's a sprinkler in the facility, it keeps it relatively small and keeps it in check. We can handle it relatively quickly. If there is no sprinkler, at about the two-minute time, you begin to get a rapid increase, you know, in fire. And so the longer it takes us to get on scene, the longer that it takes for us to begin to get that effective response force together and suppress the fire and put it out. Again, you will see that without a sprinkler and smoke detectors, at about the three and a half to four-minute timeframe in today's buildings, you will actually experience flashover at that point in time. And flashover is a point when it is not a survivable, you know, environment, you know. So there's a lot working against, you know, someone who's experiencing a fire in the home or in their business. Again, this is cardiac arrest survivor rates. This data comes to us from the American Heart Association. If we can get to somebody within about a minute, and I say we, that's the citizens who have been trained in CPR and the utilization of AEDs, and we can defibrillate and we can do CPR early on, the successes are very high for survivability. However, when that's not the case, for every minute that begins to go by from the onset of respiratory or cardiac arrest, the survivability drops significantly until you get to about the four-minute mark where it really begins to drop off. Again, this is a matter of time. Some of the benchmarks that we'll look at as an agency, obviously, I talked about call handling time, our first unit turnout time, our first unit travel time, and our first unit response time. These performance benchmarks are identified within the National Fire Protection Association standards. 1710 gives us a timeframe that we need to hit as a, you know, to achieve the best success. Our performance actually compared to what the benchmark is, we're below, that's why it's green, with call handling time. Our comm center is about 46 seconds of handling a call 90% of the time. And that 90% is important because historically, the fire service has utilized average as a metric. The challenge with average is that there's as many above as there is below. And when you compare a fractile response, what we're doing 90% of the incidents compared to an average, you will actually see about a two to three-minute difference. And an average will actually look a lot better. But 90% of the time, it will look a little bit longer. But it's more reflective of what's going on day in and day out. And removing the 10% allows us to take care, you know, to remove delayed by trains and things like that. Our first unit turnout time is two minutes and three seconds. This is honestly, looking back one year, we have begun to put a lot of things in place within the CAD system and are speeding this number up. This is beginning to, you know, to improve. As we continue to build, reconstruct fire stations in the future, they will be laid out in a manner that allows the crews to get to the trucks quicker and quicker notification, you know, of the crews. First unit travel time, 90% of the time is nine minutes and 38 seconds. And first unit response time is the 12 minutes and three seconds, 90% of the time. This is just some data from the U.S. Fire Administration. You know, what you see here is if we can keep a fire to the room of origin, the civilian deaths per 1,000 is 1.91. It's actually pretty low. Injuries is 25.32, and obviously, the average dollar loss is about $3,000. If it gets outside of that room of origin, you can see where the numbers begin to change, you know, exponentially. So again, it's a matter of time, and it's a matter of getting the effective response force in place. When I talk about our performance compared to the national standards, our EMS on a travel time, we are actually hitting that number 81% of the time. For fire, we're doing it 72% of the time, and all other incidents are 83%, you know, of the time. So we are within striking distance of that 90%. Again, these numbers will continue to improve as we improve our processes. Again, just to give you an idea of the existing fire engines within the county, there are currently 14 total fire stations. That includes Flagler Beach, Palm Coast, and Flagler County Fire Rescue. Collectively, 14 fire stations. Obviously, six fire stations are municipal, eight are county. Five of the municipal fire stations, we actually co-locate in. We actually have rescues inside of those stations. Again, we talked about strategically located. Their stations are strategically located for our rescues. So it's a great collaborative effort, and we appreciate them being effort, and we appreciate them being partners and allowing us to provide service. Station sixteen, again, is the bottom-right corner of the graphic there. That is a station that physically sits outside of the county, so half of that station's coverage area is in another county. You know, so, but again, when this cooperative agreement was implemented, it was the best answer at that point in time. And then, we have one station in Reema Ridge, which is actually staffed by Volusia County, so it's sort of a cooperative effort. But Volusia County is telling us that within the next three to five years, they will be moving the crews from that area more towards Barberville. You know, so, they will be moving out of that area. Again, this is the rescue first due...
Is that eighty-one?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Is that station eight? Can you go back one slide? Is that station eighty-one, Reema Ridge?
Yes, ma'am, that is.
Okay, thank you.
We call it Station eighty-one. Volusia County refers to it as Station eighteen. So, we have volunteers that respond out of that station to sort of support down in that area, but they pretty much handle with medical calls and the transportation of water for us for brush fires and things.
And the black numbers that, and the color areas that correspond with the station number, how are those, what are the significance of those?
Well, that is that station's area of responsibility, and working with our GIS team, we were able to identify that basically, they call it an infinite drive time. You know, so, what you're looking at here, if the crew starts out of Station seventy-one, and a crew starts out at Station thirty-one, where those two lines meet is where they can, they will actually physically be able to drive to. You know, so, it's a matter of distance, you know, as well, a maximum coverage area.
Okay.
It doesn't mean they're the only units responding to that area, but it's sort of a planning zone, you know, for us. And that's for fire engines. This one is for our rescues, for our transport ambulances. Again, five rescues are in municipal stations. Four of those are in Palm Coast. One is in Flagler Beach, and four rescues in the county stations. We do not have one in Station sixteen, one in existing Volusia County. We do not have one in Hunter's Ridge or Reema Ridge, and we do not have one in Station seventy-one, which is St. John's Park. So, that station, Station seventy-one, is actually covered by Station fifty-one out of Espinola.
Chief, do you know where the locations are in the Palm Coast area?
Palm Coast is Stations twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you.
Keep those all straight. It was a test, I guess. So, you know, the graph that you see here is actually the National Fire Incident Reporting System. And just so, you know, everybody understands that when we report our numbers, everything is categorized by a group. Obviously, one hundred is a fire, whether it's a dumpster fire, a car fire, or a house fire. Twos are overpressures. Threes are medical calls. And then, we break them down, you know, from there. So, it is, within our system, seventy-eight percent of our calls are in that three hundred category. They're medical, you know, in nature, and then, twenty-two percent, you know, is everything else. There are agencies that will tell you they have seventy-eight percent medical, and the other twenty-two percent is fire, but they're just grouping those into, you know, into a generic category. But we actually provide our numbers to you on a monthly basis, breaking them down by each subsequent area. The factors that are impacting staffing, obviously, there is no national standard to tell a community what you have to have is the number of firefighters, the number of paramedics, you know, but there are some industry standards and best practices. The National Fire Protection Association, seventeen-ten, gives you an idea of the number of firefighters that we need in a residential property compared to a high-rise, you know, fire. And I've got a graph that will show that here in a second. Again, the ISO, the Insurance Services Organization, talks about distance from a fire station and the water supply as well. And then, the American Heart Association talks about time from cardiac arrest or respiratory arrest. And collectively, you know, these form a framework for a community to determine its level of service. So, every community has to decide what it wants that level of service to look like. They have to decide what they want the response time to look like, what they, how many personnel they want to respond, you know, to an emergency. Again, this is that effective response force that NFPA identifies. A single-story residential structure is about seventeen firefighters. That's what it takes to put out a fire in a home. Open air strip mall is twenty-eight firefighters. An apartment is twenty-eight firefighters, but a high-rise fire is forty-three firefighters. You know, so, these are all very detailed, what their functions have, the breakdown for their responsibilities. And then, the community service, obviously, is five-hundred-and-seventy square miles. Four-hundred-and-eighty-five square miles are land, and eighty-five square miles are water. We were able to, you know, to acquire a boat. Sheriff Steely donated us a used boat, and we've been able to, you know, to refurbish that a little bit and use that for water response as well. We are the prehospital transport service for the entirety of Flagler County. You know, so, we're the only prehospital transport agency. We do not handle, unless it's a stat transfer or a significant emergency, we do not handle transfers between facilities. We did years ago, but every time you do that, it takes away from your emergency response. You know, so, we rely upon private ambulance services to provide those interfacility services. And then, for fire services, we are the provider for the unincorporated county, Beverly Beach, Marineland, and the city of Bonnell. The historical approaches to staffing and station locations, you know, generally, just have to admit that staffing is, follows some type of proactive issue that has happened within the system. Either the response times have begun to get too long, or there's overlapping and concurrent calls. And then, our system within Flagler County, overlapping calls account for seventy-two percent of our call volume. Yeah, so, it's only eighteen percent of the time are we experiencing one call at a time. And there are times that we will actually have, you know, ten to twelve calls going on concurrently, you know, at the same time. So, and longer incident commit times generally affect, you know, our ability to staff. You know, we are even impacted by the longer distance from stations, crews have to respond out. Then, when they're transported to the hospital and we experience the extended bed delays, where the crews take longer to get the patient off the stretcher at the hospital, that impacts our system, you know, as well. And then, station location, historically, has done wherever a community can get free land, you know, and it's also evolved out of volunteer systems. You know, again, that's not a bad thing, that's just, that's just the way that it was. So, now, you know, when it forms into a system, this means that stations, a lot of times, are not put to get in improper location. So, you've got to back up and begin to figure out where they need to be, you know, long-term. Thankfully, with GIS, we're able to do a lot of predictive analysis on where stations should go. Again, the number of addresses within four minutes, you know, this just gives you an idea about property classification, whether it's a commercial or daycare, an education facility, faith-based. We have about forty-six thousand properties that are within four minutes. So, that's only about fifty-four percent of our properties are within four minutes of a facility, of a fire station. We actually backed up and took the previous year's call volume and took the actual addresses that we responded to, the number of those that are within four minutes. Doesn't necessarily mean we got there within four minutes, but these are the numbers that are within four minutes of an existing fire station. You know, so, this is as it sits, you know, today. As we begin to move forward, some of our recommendations are to move or relocate some of the stations. We are coordinating closely with the city of Palm Coast and their new fire station constructions and trying to make sure that when they put a fire station in, we're not going to plan on putting in one just a mile down the road. You know, so, this map actually takes and puts in place Station twenty-six, which is on Seminole Woods, and then removes Station fifty-two at the airport. And then, also, this map shows Station fifty-one being relocated at three-oh-five, you know, and one hundred, so. And again, on this map, actually, it did show, make sure I don't get ahead of myself, this did show Station sixteen remaining in Volusia County and eighty-one still staffed, you know, by Volusia County. Again, when you look at that, eighty-one down on the bottom end of the map there, you'll see the area that can be covered by that station within four minutes. You know, with Station thirty-one, if it were operational, this is what a response profile would look like. Again, Station fifty-one has been moved. Station sixteen is still within Volusia County. Station eighty-one is still staffed by Volusia County. And then, this is Station sixteen, actually bringing it out of Volusia County and back into Flagler County, somewhere along the area of Old Kings Road. So, it improves coverage along that Old Kings Corridor. Station seventy-one, again, relocating that from its existing place in St. John's Park to the area of Cody's Corner. This building was built in nineteen-eighty-five, was truly was not designed for twenty-four-seven operation, but we've had to do a lot of remodeling on it. We do have a lot of repeated flooding out there, not necessarily during hurricane, but significant storms. And again, this deals with an overlap of Station fifty-one as it continues to grow and to respond. And again, it would better relocate emergency response to the south end of State Route eleven. Again, you know, when we're talking about a proactive approach to station staffing and station location, you know, identifying predetermined trigger points, you know, when you're going to add staffing or onboard staffing to try to maintain a certain level of service, response times, you know, and cardiac arrest survivor rates and things like that, you know, the proactive approach actually ensures available resources at the time of nine-one-one request, and it improves the mental health of responders. You know, so, as the call volume continues to grow, you know, it becomes an issue for responders to be able to, you know, to maintain their training, to do their report, to keep their station duties, and to have some level of recuperation time between emergencies. And a proactive staffing plan allows for the smoothing of emergency response resources so that you don't wait every five to ten years and then try to hire the staff all at the same time. And then, station locations, obviously, looking at strategically located facilities or sites, the distance from emergency response facilities to the homes that are being constructed or the properties, businesses that are being built, and the time from an emergency response facility is factored in. So, again, you begin to strategically locate them so they can support each other and get an initial emergency response unit to the scene. Some of the future impacts that we know that are coming, that are at least on the drawing board, are Palm Coast development of regional impact, the State Road one-hundred DRI, the Town Center DRI, the Ogre Lakes DRI, Old Brick Township DRI, and Reserve at Hall Creek. And these are just some of the projects that are being, you know, discussed, and there are various stages of planning.
I have a quick question on these DRIs, and some of these are older DRIs. Do they have anything written into about land donation for fire?
I can't speak to them, you know, directly, and, you know, the land donation for fire is a challenge, because again, they want to give you land, and sometimes, it's not strategically located. You know, so, we would have to look at that to see if it would fit, you know, our needs. But one of the things about the Florida Fire Prevention Code is that when projects come in that increase either the square footage that the fire department protects by one percent, or the population by more than one percent, the developer has to conduct a concurrency study. So, that would help us speak to the impact that their development is going to have, you know, on our ability to respond into and serve that project.
So, what, does anyone know what they typically do? These are old DRIs, and they get updated, and there was something for donation of land. Is there now a possibility to renegotiate with these DRIs to get you?
That is always a possibility. I think that's probably more of a policy issue from, you know, from the board.
Yeah, okay. Well, a lot of these are on our boards. I mean, with these DRIs, they're going to run through Palm Coast and the city of Bonnell, right?
Yeah, the top are all, the first one, I'm assuming, is the Palm Coast Park DRI?
That's a name I haven't heard.
That's the one up and down U.S. One.
Okay, yes.
Right.
I believe so.
All the same, yeah.
And sometimes, when these projects are so far out, there's nothing you can do except just manage them as you move forward. And these are just some items to consider. Obviously, we continue to pay attention to the five road miles. You know, we continue to pay attention to any time a service demand zone, and that's when we take a station's response area and we break it down into subzones. When they begin to get outside of our desired performance goals, we pay attention to those, monitor those. When a demand in a service area exceeds our performance metrics for availability, reliability, and concentration. And then, obviously, we work closely with the cities to make sure that we're building stations and emergency response facilities, you know, concurrently, just trying to work together to make sure we're serving the community best. And then, obviously, we talk about any potential annexation or growth that may impact, you know, either of our needs. You know, so, we, again, working great with City of Palm Coast and Flagler Beach and having these conversations. This is, we talk about the staffing of rescues, and if we look back historically and we talk about the call volume, you know, and we know that it's increasing, within Flagler County, our utilization rate for firefighter, for emergency medical services, or I should say nine-one-one, not just emergency medical, for nine-one-one services is at fifteen percent. So, whenever a thousand people move into the community, there's a correlating offset of about a hundred and fifty calls that are coming into the nine-one-one center. Just to give you an idea, I had a little bit of experience in a place called The Villages. It's a small community over in central Florida. Its utilization rate was at thirty percent. You know, so, it was, you know, thirty percent of their people were calling nine-one-one. So, that's just a fact of life, you know. As populations age, as communities increase, there is a correlating impact. You know, if we begin to project those numbers out, and I believe these numbers are absolutely solid, if we use that fifteen percent, we project the call volume of those, we can factor in how many are going to be EMS calls. Essentially, about every three years, to maintain our current level of service with rescues, our ability to respond in a timely manner at a given call volume, we are essentially going to have to look at adding a rescue about every three years. And so, we can factor the staffing that needs to be, to correlate to that, you know, as well. And again, this is much more detailed, you know, in the body of the report, but it is absolutely critical, because when a unit is out of its assigned area responsibility, that first due area, when it's transporting a patient to the hospital, another unit has to come in from somewhere else, you know, in the county, and then, it becomes a series of dominos. You know, so, when that one moves from outside of its first due area, then another one has to respond and to cover its call. So, it's essentially a big backfill. And it's not uncommon, again, for us to have ten to twelve calls going on concurrently, and it can be a challenge. So, this actually looks out to fiscal year twenty-fourty-nine and just gives you an idea of what we could potentially be looking at as far as the number of rescues. This is just a graph, you know, to show you more visually of what that same chart previously said. Too fast here. Again, some of the benchmark agencies, I think we, as a county, have utilized Indian River, St. Lucie County, Nassau County, Charlotte County as benchmark, you know, communities that are experiencing some of the same challenges as we are. You know, this gives you an idea of their square miles, their population, the number of transport units that they have, and we've broken it down by units per one thousand population. And again, I threw in The Villages, not that it's a benchmark agency, but we do have some experience with them as well. We currently maintain a ratio of one rescue to every fourteen thousand of eight-hundred-and-nineteen, you know, in population. And talking to St. Lucie County and their emergency, their fire chief, they have twenty-two rescues for three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand people. Their ratio is one to sixteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five, and they're unable to keep up. They're experiencing significant challenges within their system, you know, so they're trying to figure out how to catch up to their population growth, you know, as well. Engine staffing, just to give you an idea, we currently have four fire engines in the county that are staffed full-time. The station in Espinola, Station fifty-one, that has two people, you know, in that station. They staff a rescue, they staff a fire engine, they staff a tender, and they staff an attack truck. And depending upon the call that comes in, they move their equipment from one unit, you know, to the next. The challenge with that is if there's a rescue call and they leave on the rescue, I've now lost the response capabilities of one fire engine. But if it's a fire engine call, they get on the fire engine, they respond, I've now lost the response capabilities of a rescue. So, that crew is very busy just moving between the apparatus. So, and this just gives you an idea of what, when we look at the population of the projects that are coming down the line, you know, the housing projects and the potential industrial projects, you know, we're probably looking at about one fire engine every five years to six years. But again, this just gives you an idea based upon call volume of what the direction that we're heading. So, our recommendations is to officially adopt our response time goals, you know, for call handling times or turnout times or travel times, our response times, and total response times. And as if we, as officially adopting those, those will be our requirement to report, to achieve those and report those back to the B O C C on a consistent basis. To actually measure all of our response time goals at the fractile standard of ninety percent. And again, what the fractile means is if I have a hundred calls, I rank them from the longest response time to the best response time, and I'm interested in what I'm doing at call number ninety and better. You know, so, it's a different way of reporting, but it is more realistic. Adopt a standard of one rescue per fourteen thousand population. Adopt an implementation criteria of opening a new fire station whenever there's a population outside of a five-mile contiguous area from a fire station of fifty-five-hundred people, you know, or more. And then, implement a staffing formula of point-five paramedics to one thousand population, county-wide population, and then, two-point-eight firefighters to one thousand for the areas population, and then 2.8 firefighters to 1,000 for the areas that we are responsible as the fire service provider, which is unincorporated in Marineland, Beverly Beach, and City of Benel. And I'm ready to answer any questions that you have.
Can you go back one more slide?
I make no promises. I may have to have some help from the...
No.
It was way back.
Way, that's all.
You go to the end there, Carlos?
Just the recommendation, right?
So at the bottom, did we do comparisons of the other counties for those two measurements?
Not for, no, sir, not for the firefighters in particular.
Okay, is that a standard based on what, then?
That is our current level of service.
Okay.
That's where we currently sit at, you know, today, so just trying to maintain what we currently do.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
With the growth, as far as the traffic of the roads, are you caught, is that, is the growth causing you a different time than it used to be, or can you predict the future? Is it going to affect you more or less?
I think, yeah, anecdotally, I would say it has affected, but fortunately, it's pretty much depends upon the time of day, you know, majority of the time you move through the county with, with no challenges. Obviously, 8 o'clock, you know, 4:30 in the afternoon are distinctly, you know, different, you know, so again, as the, as the county continues to grow, and we need to plan for proper roadways and the width of roads and lanes and, and things like that, so we'll continue to work with DOT and making sure that we've got the traffic preemption devices, what they call the optocoms, to try to move traffic, you know, as we approach those intersections.
And that's still down due to construction, like on 100?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Right, now that, that whole corridor is a, is a challenge.
Yeah, challenge, very good.
Want to take a consensus on adoption?
Well, it'll need to come back, right, to, are we going to adopt resolutions on these or just as policy?
It's up to the board, however, the board would like to do that.
So you'd made a comment about, based on this information, you would need a new ambulance every three years and a new fire truck every five to six years.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's the big equipment. You've still got to stock it, you've got to man it, you've got to run it, you've got to maintain it. When you present us with your budget, will you, or with Ms. Heidi, will you have a long-term staffing slash equipment budget worked into that budget? Do you want to start somewhere? Do you want to start in '25?
Well, a lot of this capital equipment, we already have, you know, identified, you know, within a plan, you know, so it's a matter of just continuing to implement it, you know, as, as we move forward.
Okay.
One of the other things that does make it a challenge with ordering fire trucks and ambulances right now is, it takes, it's about three-year delivery on fire trucks and about two years on ambulances right now, so.
It looks to me like you're asking us to come out with a document that includes these type, this type information, that you would be required, in other words, put it in writing, that you'd be coming back to us to report on your progress in these areas. That's what you're asking us to do.
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay.
I think more importantly, this is, helps you with your budgeting, right?
It helps him, it certainly helps in planning.
Right, so you're able to look out a few years and anticipate some needs and, and that's where I see this helping you really significantly anyway.
It, it helps a lot in, in the ability to, obviously, to recruit, it helps in the ability to retain, but it also helps as an area of professional development, you know, as we grow officers and begin to move in the future, we can have timelines and we, you know, we know when to start shooting at, you know, at certain targets. So it definitely helps to smooth, you know, that, that budget process, and also helps us to, to focus our areas that we need to be dealing with each year.
Well, obviously, I think we all, you know, value being responsive to health, safety, and welfare of the residents, and, and I would say that, you know, our fire rescue and firefighters are highly thought of in the community, the, and, you know, we definitely want to maintain standards, so the, you know, if this can help you in, in budgeting and, and keeping those standards up.
Do you have a draft already of a document that would institutionalize all your recommendations?
I do not have one at this time. I can very easily...
I think it'd be a good idea, bring it back to us.
I do, I...
With an actual, here's what it says, and, yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
And to the administrator, how, how would you want this ratified to be able to help in the chief and his budgeting? How does that, how does that help you on a yearly basis?
Well, I think it speaks volumes of the board's, you know, policy priorities, and I think that, you know, when we look at public safety, the area that has been extremely lagging has been the fire rescue side. And so as we start to work on the budget, right now, we have two stations that'll be, starting with the groundbreaking, but as you can see from the report, we have a need for probably three more fire stations over the next, you know, I'd say probably two to, you know, seven years. So I think this will help us as we start to prioritize that budget and look at what the needs are for the community. It definitely helps administration, it helps that whole budget and planning from a fire rescue as far as adding additional positions and things like that. So I think whatever, I mean, we can work internally and bring something back at, you know, your next meeting or upcoming meeting, if not the next one, the one after that, as part of the rollout of the budget. But we do have a plan internally, and so, you know, we're working on funding of what that next third fire station, the one, I think Corona is the next one in line, and then we'd look at either Cody's Corner or that old Kings Road. Because although we are working out of Halifax right now, it's kind of a 50/50, a lot of our resources are going into Volusia. And so if there's a way to capture that and move it further north on Old Kings and keep our resources within Flagler, it just makes more sense. And so we can certainly come up with something and bring it back to you at a upcoming meeting.
Okay, I think there's consensus from that to, to have another look at that, so thank you for the research and the presentation.
Thank you for your support.
Any other final questions for chief?
I just, on page 55, where you list future station considerations, can you share that with the other municipalities? As the county chief, I would think that, I know you meet with them on a regular basis, but maybe they need to start preparing their councils as well on, you know, future development needs, and at least have it discussed so that as they move into these DRIs or whatever they're doing, I don't see a lot of these impacting our service, do you? I mean, are any of these in our geographical area?
From a fire response, no, but from an emergency medical...
Oh, true, 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 I'm sorry.
Definitely.
Okay.
And I do have to give, you know, credit to the, to the municipal fire chiefs, you know, they are, they are having these conversations with their leadership, you know, as well.
Great.
Thank you for all that you're doing for all of our residents. I appreciate your, your staff doing amazing job, so thank you for that, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment on the fire chief's report? Open it up for public comment. All right, seeing that, we'll bring it back. Legislative update. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Holly, Albany's Legislative Liaison today. Just pulling up the presentation. Okay, for expediency, I'm not going to go through every last detail of what you have in front of you as far as the report is concerned. Just highlight the ones that I feel are the most important, that you should really have some context on. Okay, so I'm going to go through, these are bills, bills that are going through the House and Senate right now on tax, homestead, and property exemptions. I've been monitoring about 120 bills already this session. The ones that are highlighted are the actual bills that are still showing some movement. Not working. Okay, this is revenue and assessment. These are obviously revenue and assessment bills. And again, the one that's highlighted is the one that's still showing movement. And I'm going to go through a few of these in my next slides, I'm not doing it right now. So again, these are other, all sorts of different areas, like tourist development tax, public safety, regional planning. Anyways, the ones highlighted, as you can see, there's quite a few, these are the ones that still have movement. CS, SB 110, HB 1427, it's rural communities, this has kind of been known as the farm bill. Just for our, for you guys, for your notification, the most important factors out of this bill for us, because we're not really considered a ready county at this point, we're not fiscally constrained, and that's what this really looks at, they've increased for fiscally constrained counties, that raises the $5 million in property tax revenue per one mil to $10 million per one mil. For Flagler County to be considered fiscally constrained, they'd have to raise that beyond $12 million. The one good thing, or two good things, that are in this bill is that they're going to be looking at the definitions and metrics that define what a rural county is, so that's a possibility. We fell out of ready status, we're no longer, we don't have a population of 75,000, we're not contiguous to a county that has a population of 75,000, and we would have to be at 125,000 or less. So because of that, we've lost our ready status, however, if they made those adjustments, it's possible that we could be a ready county again. And then the other thing that's of, of, you know, something that's concerning is that the bill redirects a portion of vehicle title fees, but that would be a good thing because they would be giving more money to our scrap program, which is the Small County Road Assistance Program, which helps us on the west side especially. I'm not going to really go over this one, this just extends an exemption that already exists for surviving spouses of quadriplegics. SB 180 and HB 1535, they're both moving through the House and Senate. The one that seems to have the most movement at this point is SB 180 that was heard last week in one of the committees. They're saying that some, and so, just so you know, this is like daily. What I put on the agenda today, it's already changed, so this one in particular did change. So DEPs reduce or wave match for beach erosion projects in disaster-declared counties. So that was one of the things that was added to the bill. Also, reduce shelter deficits, and also, it looks like post-storm plans, so they want your emergency management to have post-storm plans. Those are the big things in this bill, and I've spoken to Jonathan Lord, and he has no issues at this time with this one, so just keep going. 184 is housing, and I know that Joe Hegidis, your HHS director, was up here, and he spoke about some of this stuff, and this has to do with the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. So I'm not really going to go over that one. Again, this is ad valorem tax exemption for nonprofit homes for the age. It's still moving, but it's early. This is the most important one, I think, right now, which has to do with suits against the government. HB 301 and the counterpart in Senate is SB 1570. 301 seems to be moving, although on 416, the House already passed this, so now it's up to the Senate. So what that means for the county is that the possibility, if the House passes, say, the Senate passes the House bill, what you have is an increase to, from 300,000 or 200,000 to 500,000 per person, and an increase for, per incident from 300,000 to 1 million as of 20 October 2030, up until 2030. And then after 2030, they have a one-time ability to automatically increase this, and it would go to 600,000 per person and 1.1 million per incident. I did talk to the risk manager for Flagler County to see what the estimate of the proposed changes, what it would, how it would impact our insurance coverage, and according to them, the early estimate at this point is 30 to 50% increase in general liability and auto liability rates, so anywhere from 125,000 to 210,000 annually is an increase, we could see that. So again, this was passed in the House already. Again, another one I'm not going to go through, but I wanted to make sure that you had the information on a lot of these bills so that you could review them. Should you have any questions, you can get back to me, but I don't want to go over every single one. HB 665 is local government impact fees and development permits and orders. This is concerning because it's, of the impact fees, it changes the impact fee beyond the FASIN limitations established by the Florida Impact Fee, so that would make some adjustments to that. But also, it says that the county or municipality can't require an applicant for a development permit or development order to install a work of art, pay a fee for a work of art, or reimburse the local government for any costs associated with a work of art. So just so you know that that is something that did come up. It's still moving, hasn't passed the House yet.
That's an impact fee within Palm Coast now.
Yeah. We were going to look at it maybe at some point.
So this would affect county or municipality, so this isn't just for the county, but the impact fee, it says, it requires a local government seeking to increase an impact fee rate beyond the FASIN limitations established by the original act to conduct a demonstrated need study using a plan-based methodology, and requires the demonstrate need study to show the presence of certain factors. And, and the rest of that information that I provided you going back gives you what that would look like. So right now, our impact fees are fine, but if you wanted to increase them, there are certain things that would be required, and if you wanted to increase them beyond what they consider the FASIN limitation, limitations, which is that second portion, then you'd have to meet the certain requirements that they have. HJR 679 and SJR 802, it looks like the House version of this is moving, that means joint resolution. This would be a constitutional amendment. It has to do with term limits for members of boards or county commissions and district school boards, and basically, they propose, I think you guys already know about this, that it proposes that the eight-year limit applies to terms of office beginning after November 3, 2026. Now, what happens, even if it passes the House and the Senate, it requires three-fifths vote of the membership of each House, of the legislature, to appear on the next general election ballot. So it would have to go on a ballot as a constitutional amendment, which is probably why it wouldn't even take effect until after 20, November 26, and they, you'd have to have 60% of the electors voting. And just so you know, this was passed also in the House on 416, and our representative did vote in favor of it. 818, utility relocation, this one is moving so fast that even today, while I was sitting here, I was getting an email from our lobbyists that there was another strike-all amendment on this. So this has changed yet again. I don't have the new information, I wasn't able to really review it and give you anything at this point because this just happened today. But basically, if, we'll say it provides an exemption for broadband internet providers and cable service and video service providers from the general requirement that utility owners bear the cost of relocating utilities, and it shifts that to either the entity, the FDOT, or local government entities. So in our case, that would shift that cost to us if, if that should happen. So, in our case, that would shift that cost to us if that should happen. Again, I'm not sure what the amendment says. I'm going to have to read the amendment, and I'll be glad to email you all with an update on what that looks like. But this could, you know, have some financial impacts to Flagler County if this should move forward.
I'll have a question on that.
Yes.
When it comes, it's just a right-of-ways, right? Or is it public?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the right-of-ways or any public road. So, if it's one of our public roads and the work has to be done, it would essentially fall on us if it's one of those owners, like the broadband, internet, cable, video, because they're the ones being given the exemption from the cost. But again, there was an amendment today that I don't know what it says. If, it may change all of what I just told you. I have to review it. I'll be glad to email you with all with an update on that. This one is, again, assessment of homestead properties. This mainly has to do with replace, if somebody has to replace a portion of their property that was damaged by a storm, it must be calculated using the assessed value of the January before the storm. And then they talk about if they have to elevate their home to mitigate flooding, they do not increase the property's assessed value for purpose of ad valorem property taxes unless the square footage exceeds 110% of the fronted footage of the property before the elevation happened. Again, this is another, this is tied to House Resolution 1039, meaning that if this were approved, it still has to go to the voters anyways. So, you should know that. But this could have a negative recurring impact on local government revenues of a total of 123.6 million, 44 of that on school taxes and 79 on non-school taxes in fiscal year 25, 26. The bill would not be effective until January 27 because it would have to go on the next election. And so, the cash impacts do not begin until 27, 28, if that should move through. Again, a lot of these have not passed yet. So, and we're two weeks away from the end of session. Public safety, I have reviewed this one with our Fire Chief, and we're good with this one at this point. Anything that we were concerned with and didn't agree with, if you see, it said the adopted amendment removed a lot of that. And the big one was that they wanted to consolidate an operation of 911 services under the sheriff, and we, Chief felt that that would be contrary to what he needs to do. So, we did contact our lobbyists. They worked with us, but fortunately, there was an amendment that changed all of that. So, this particular bill is not an issue. Again, another one that has property tax exemptions, it's, this one also has a new amendment as of today, so can't really give you much on that one. 1263, I'm not going to talk about this one because actually, it's 1265 that's going to, where am I, 1259? You don't need that one. I thought I already moved this. 1263, election of county commissioners. I'm moving through that one because, again, it's 1265 that's really the one that's going to go through. 1264, this has to do, and I know Commissioner Dance, this was one that you were really concerned with because this was the one that was going to repeal. Oh, no, this isn't the one. It's 1664, sorry. There was a strike-all amendment filed by Senator Collins, which removes language to repeal RPCs heard, and it's being heard in rules today at 2:00, so I didn't get to hear it. So, I'm hoping that amendment was approved so that that would remove that language to repeal the RPCs, which are the, the Regional Planning Council. So, the bill originally was repealing the statutory requirement for the RPCs, so that's been removed from the bill. Or, it was in an amendment, I should say, and I have to check to see if that amendment did pass. This is the one, 1265, that it's linked to House Resolution 1263, and this has to do with the election of county commissioners, school board members, and adding that school superintendents should be elected as well. This one basically is saying that county commissioners to be nominated and elected by qualified electors who reside in the same county commissioner district as the commissioner. So, that might put a little extra work on the supervisor of elections in the sense where, you know, when people go to vote, they could only vote for you if they're within your district. That's what that says. And then it also talks about just after every decennial census, the board should look at the population and divide it to where it's as equal as practical. So, the big one here is they want to actually make the school superintendents elected. Yeah. So, I'm not sure how that would work for them. But this one is still moving. Again, it hasn't passed yet, and there's only two weeks left in the session. So, 1664, that's SB 1664, and House Bill, it should say 1221, not 1211. So, basically, this gives the local option taxes. So, this has to do with your discretionary sales tax and tourist development tax. Obviously, I've spoken to Amy Lukasik, our Tourism Director, and of course, we are against this because if you have to, never mind the fact that we, right now, don't have that under referendum, but you would have to, you would have to put this on a referendum for approval, and you'd have to do this every eight years. And so, there has been a lot of discussion. Again, this is still not passed about the, so they've been discussing about the eight-year renewal and voter approval required. It was heard this week, or is being heard 422 at 11:00 AM. And 1221 is also moving, HB 1221. And again, discussion on the eight-year renewal and cost. And I guess that's what the House Bill is looking at, is what that cost would be if you had to do a referendum every eight years on these. So, in order, so for instance, there was discussion about the sales tax. If you wanted to implement a sales tax and you didn't want to do the referendum, you'd have to do it before June 30. Otherwise, after June 30, if this bill should pass, you have to go out to referendum. Okay. Quickly, just want to let you know our funding priorities. Obviously, you know, we had four of them this year. Only one made it to the budget at all. It was the construction of the Regional Trails and Conservation Center. We originally requested 3 million. 1.5 has been budgeted, but they have to go to conference. The House is required to put at least 50% of the request into the budget. Otherwise, it can't make it to the House budget. Senate doesn't have that same requirement, which is why you see 1.5. That's 50% of it. Now, will we get, so one of three things could happen. You get zero, you get 1.5, or you get the full 3 million. Those are the three things that could happen during budgeting. I will tell you that they are more than $4 billion apart on their budgets between the House and Senate. So, it's, I don't know when they're conferencing, but there's only two weeks left in session. And I did hear from another lobbyist who said that they really felt this year very strongly that there was going to be an extension of session because of this. So, we'll have to see what they do, but they're very far apart on their budgets between the House and Senate. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the water quality grant applications. As you will see, we requested the amounts we requested for each of the projects. We did not get any of these. City of Bonnell, I mean, did get their project. They had requested one project, but we didn't get any of these. And there was, I think, 200 million, and I think they put out 190 million, something like that. But they had well more than a billion worth of projects that had come forward for these grants. So, anyways, we didn't get it. I think the septic to sewer conversion and water expansion project, 27 million, was a heavy lift. And, but the others, I would recommend that, again, I think it's July 15 is the deadline to request these again for the grant. I recommend we probably push it forward again if we still need these.
Who wrote the original grants for these?
The first three were engineering, and the last one, the septic to sewer, was me.
Okay. And so, we'd need to push them forward again in June, July?
July. The thing about these grants is, just so you know, they're DEP. They ask questions. They only give you so many characters or words, so you can't necessarily put everything that you would want to say in the grant application. You can provide backup, which we do.
So, I guess I'll ask, is there an appetite to put any of these forward again, and then who should be writing the grants or attempting this again? Or is it just? I know that I want to see, I mean, the last one's a big one, right?
It's a heavy lift.
Is FUGA, were they involved at all in that or no?
FGUA was involved in providing a lot of the information and backup documentation that I did provide. And I even worked with Growth Management because if you look at the area, there's not enough conversion that it sort of makes a good return on investment. So, we went further than that. We looked at land that was not already built on, and they provided a potential of what that would look like. So, we added that into the numbers along with how that would affect the nitrogen levels, phosphorus levels if we didn't convert these septic, these sewer sewers to, septic to sewer, sorry. So, anyways, we did try to add more information to make it appealing because I think that was the comment when we had put it to the legislature, was that it was not helping enough people.
Refresh my memory, does this new water project, it's just an expansion and won't replace the water at Plantation Bay?
No, it's an expansion project. So, it's conversion of sewer systems or septic systems that exist in the area. We were looking at the area going from Plantation Bay to the Volusia Line. That's how much it would cost just to do that small area. As I said, it's a, it's a heavy lift. And I did work with FGUA, and I did work with Growth Management to try and increase those numbers to make it a little more palatable for the people who are making the decisions on whether it was a good project or not. It just did not help enough people currently in the area. And the only way you're going to get business, I think, to build in that area is if we bring water and sewer to them. So, it's kind of a catch-22 when you think about it. But yes, engineering did do the other three.
And so, FUGA wasn't, are they willing to, like, change the parameter maybe if they're asked, like, phase it? Maybe they, has anybody talked to them about saying, well, we can't do this entire stretch, but maybe you guys could, to get that number down so we can go again?
Well, we can, we can work with FGUA. Heidi's on the board, right?
I am, and they actually, simultaneous to us applying, they were trying to go after state revolving funds and submit another application to not put all of the costs in this. But unfortunately, this is, when we looked at it, it was, I don't want to call it bare bones, but it was pared down considerably.
Yeah.
But, you know, they have to make sure that it makes financial sense, so it does need to be large enough that it brings on enough ratepayers to make it where it's self-sufficient. So.
Holly, in the past, septic to sewer has been kind of a thing that they look for. Not so much, the change?
Not last year. Now, my understanding is next year, water projects are going to once again be big in the legislature, and I think part of the reason is because of how many grant applications DEP received and could not fulfill.
You remember on the Barrier Island, we asked for eight, and they gave us 10. You know, I mean, that, it was the environment was such that...
I think they expected that the amount that we'd requested, not that it wasn't a good number, but that by the time we got the money, it was going to be increased because of the increase in prices. I think that's kind of what they looked at. But anyways, so, yeah, I, I think we can definitely look at this. Maybe, maybe we do phase it in, but I, I think it's a heavy lift as it is.
It's the net result of the no federal funds either.
Yes.
Which helped us on the Barrier Island.
Yes.
I think the top three still have a significant merit. My only suggestion is, you know, if maybe, it may not be the actual grant and the writing itself, other than the fact that there's way more projects than funds available. But maybe, you know, part of the process is reviewing the grants that were approved and seeing if we can pick up anything from their grants that can help us.
Absolutely. They, I did provide also in the backup, the list of the grants that were approved this year. I don't know if you saw it or not, but I did provide that. The City of Bonnell, they did get one of their water projects.
Okay.
And just the remainder of session, just so you can see, it ends May 2 as of right this minute, but I don't know that that's going to stay that way. We'll see if they can complete conference on the budget and pass the bills that they have. And that's it.
The Daytona newspaper said there was no chance that they would finish.
I, I...
I mean, they said there's no chance.
I am kind of with you, and as I said, a lobbyist that I spoke to the other day, not our lobbyist, a different one, and they just happened to say that they didn't think it was going to end. They figured either they would end session, not end it, but say, oh, we're going to take a break for two weeks, we're going to come back and complete this, or they're going to extend it.
Yeah. That was this morning's paper. They said absolutely no chance. So.
We'll see. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pita, was there anything else for the agenda?
We didn't have anything else, and it's a little after 3:30.
Okay. Is there anybody that wished to speak on the legislative agenda, on the legislative items? We'll open the floor for public comment. All right, seeing them, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Anybody from the dais have any comments? I'll look on this side.
I'll just save mine for Commissioner comment.
Okay. All right, that, we will come back at 5:00 PM for the regular board meeting. Need a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Davis. Greg Davis.